Go into chapter two of the Acts of 2025. This meeting will be conducted via remote means. Members of the public who wish to watch or listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner. Video conference with login information on the agenda on the town website. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be available, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the Topsfield website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. That said, I'm happy to call the meeting of the planning board to order. Bob?
I think we lost him. He might have had a bad connection. Here he is. Okay, he's back.
I'm not seeing him.
He's coming in.
Bob, would you like to call the zoning board meeting together?
Yes, I hereby call a meeting to order.
Great job.
Do I need to read the?
No, I already read it. I think it's adequate that one of us does that.
Okay.
I can also announce that the meeting is being recorded via Zoom in the event that the connection is lost at any time during the meeting. The meeting is also being recorded by Topsfield Cable TV and will be available on the Topsfield website cable video on demand page. Is there anyone else present who wishes to record the meeting? That said, no, no one? Okay, great. So we can move to the reason for our joint meeting, which is the public hearing for modifications to our Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals Rules and Regulations. Who is going to read the notice? Steve?
Notice is hereby given that the Topsfield Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals, ZBA, will hold a public hearing during our virtual planning board meeting on Wednesday, December 3, 2025 at 7:00 PM. And then there's a long Zoom link. To discuss and vote on proposed modifications to the Topsfield Planning Board and ZBA rules and regulations, including application forms, submission requirements, and fee schedule. Proposed modifications include, but are not limited to: Housekeeping changes. Amend documents to remove or alter names of boards, commissions, and positions that no longer exist or have had a name change. Expand contact information to include a cell phone number and email address. Amend submissions, distribution requirements. Update the days when boards meet. Correct any inaccurate references to boards. Clarify when a stormwater permit is required. And modify Form B, the abutters list, to be the certified abutter form the applicant obtains from the assessor. Additions. Updating Topsfield stormwater rules and regulations to be compliant with the latest state stormwater regulations and specifying that a town-approved septic plan must be included with the application for a stormwater permit. In the scenic roads rules and regulations. Changing the wording from a scenic road special permit to scenic road permit. Fee schedule changes. Specifying the fee and application. Excuse me. Specifying the fee an applicant must now submit with their application to cover outsourced stormwater engineering reviews. Clarifying and centralizing all fees into one document and increasing the application fees for a permit, special permit, finding, site plan, or zoning relief. A copy of the text of the proposed modifications is available for inspection prior to the public hearing at the Topsfield Town website on the planning board page or through the town clerk's office. At Town Hall, 8 West Common Street, Topsfield, Mass. During normal business hours.
Okay, thank you, Steve. If, now that was a long notice, to be sure. On a high level, basically, we have housekeeping items. And Steve mentioned a number of them, that these happen every now and again, that we have to tidy up our documents and our forms in order to reflect changes that have happened. Second, we have been working with the EPA to update our stormwater regulations so that we will be in compliance with the MS4 permit requirements of all towns with MS4 permits. And then finally, because we no longer have an in-house stormwater coordinator, quite a bit has had to be done to reflect the fact that all of this work is being done by an outside consulting engineer. And that involves both process and fees. So that's on the high level. I hope that everyone will appreciate that Lynn has put in an enormous amount of work to get all of this material together. And it's to her credit that we will be able to go through in an organized fashion all of this material tonight. So if no one has any objections, I think I would like to turn this over to Lynn for her to take us through all of these changes that we will be making. Bob, would you like to say anything before we start in?
Bob, can you hear us? Looks like it might have frozen.
Yeah, it looks like. Okay, well. Lynn, do you want to start us off?
Sure. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Yes, I can.
So I think the easiest way probably to go through this is to work right off of the planning board website. There was a page dedicated to listing all of the changes that we're going to discuss tonight. And I'm just going to take them a little bit out of order because I think it'll make more sense. We're going to start with the documents that have been centralized. The submittal distribution and the fee schedule. So as Martha mentioned, there are a couple of high-level reasons why we're going through all these regulations. And one of them is that the fee schedule had to change because we no longer have a stormwater coordinator. So in looking at the fees and the submittal distribution requirements, they appeared in about six different documents. So what we did is we combined them into a single document and then just had the other documents refer to them. That way, in the future, if anything needs to change about the number of copies that people need to provide to the boards or the fee, you only need to go into one document. So I'll start with this one. Hopefully, I can't see what you're seeing, so I hope this is supplement Form C that just came up?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great. All right. So currently, six copies of every application need to be dropped off to the town clerk. That's what's in the rules and regulations right now. Since most of the meetings now are virtual and with electronic communication, we don't need that many paper copies. So this centralized consolidated form shows that if you were submitting a comprehensive permit, you only need four copies, subdivision control, four copies. And everything else, which is the vast majority, it's 99% of everything that comes in, you only need two paper copies. Down here, it talks about sending an electronic copy to both boards. In the past, it said DVDs and CDs. So we took out any reference to particular technologies, so this stands the test of time. And those are really the only changes that were made here, but it is consolidated. So when we get to the applications and the rules and regs, you'll see that this material has been pulled out of them and it just references this document. So in talking with the planning board chair before this meeting, the approach she suggested was that we see if there are any comments from the public and then move on to the next document. And at the end, after you close the public hearing, you will actually vote on these documents. So if any changes are made either from public comments or if the board feels based upon a public comment that'd like to make a change, when it comes time to vote, someone will make the motion as amended. I'll note that there was an amendment. Otherwise, it'll be as presented. So at this point, I guess I would turn it back and see if anyone has any questions or if anyone in the public has any questions about this particular document. Doesn't sound like there are any?
No, doesn't seem like.
I don't see anything. Is somebody monitoring the chat? Nope, nothing in chat.
Okay, it would be better since I have so many documents up here that if someone would like to speak, if they actually speak up as opposed to putting something in the chat. We're just, well, I'm sorry, that's.
I will monitor the chat anyway, since this is a virtual meeting. It should be monitored.
That'd be great, Steve. Thank you. Okay. All right. So the next one then to discuss is the fee schedule. So again, this was consolidated, taken out of all applications and rules and regs. And all of those documents will just reference this. So this fee schedule has not been updated since 2006. And as everybody knows, costs have gone up. So I'm going to walk through each of these, but I'll summarize as I go. So anything that you see here now that has a $300 fee used to be $200. So it went up $100. So the appeals, the finding, the variances, et cetera, you can see all the 300s, those used to be 200. Comprehensive permit was 600 previously, it's now 1,500. While that sounds like a big jump, it's really not. We don't often have comprehensive permits. And the 1,500 is actually much more in line with the elderly housing district that I'll come to a little bit down this sheet. Because a comprehensive permit is extensive. Think of the Emerson Homes. It took nine months for that to be processed. It was 44 units, there was a peer review, it's an extensive process. So 1,500 actually is on the lower side and very reasonable for the amount of work that the boards put in on this. I'll note here that there is a fee cap now of $750 for applications to the ZBA. So let's say that someone was looking for a finding and they were looking for a variance and a site plan review. If you add up 300, 300, 300, it would be 900. But there is now a cap at 750, so it will never go above 750. But this does not apply to the stormwater engineer review fees that I'll cover in just a moment or for an application for a comprehensive permit. Because again, that's 1,500 as its basic fee. Anything that is now listed as 125 previously was $100. So that would be for A&amp;Rs in the common drives. There were no changes to the elderly housing district. But you can see how this is much more comprehensive and elaborate. And this is more in line with now with the fee is going to be for the comprehensive permit. These two, ground-mounted solar and the groundwater protection district, went up from 200 to 300. Scenic road went up from 75 to 100. Site plan review went up from 200 to 300. And the stormwater is all new. So since the town no longer has a stormwater coordinator who reviewed all the stormwater engineering plans, the town had to outsource this. So we now have a contract with an engineering firm and their job is to review the applications as they come in. So the fee now is going to be $300 to the town for all the administration that's involved on the town's part. 950 is the engineering review fee for the stormwater management plan. That is what's in the contract with the outside consultant. And $500 for each additional review that's required to bring the stormwater plans into compliance. We have had in the past six or eight months, a couple of plans come in that were in really bad shape. And our engineer told them changes to make. It came back and not all the changes were incorporated or it caused other problems. So if you go through the first engineering review, which is you review the plan, you give the applicant comments, they revise the plan and give it back to our engineer and then he reviews it again. That's considered the comprehensive review. If it needs more than that, if it has to go out again to the engineer, the applicant's engineer, to be worked on and come back, every time it goes out and comes back is another $500. And again, this is the contract that we have with the engineering firm. A note here, if a stormwater permit was approved as part of a zoning board of appeals site plan review, no additional fee will be required for the planning board to vote to issue the permit. Because that is more of a, you know, kind of a perfunctory step because they are, the planning board would be relying upon the zoning board doing all of the legwork with the engineer that we have for the town. So that would just be a vote at the planning board, no additional cost. There's no change in subdivision fees. The wind energy went up from 200 to 300. And then a couple of notes here, which are, they were in the fee schedule before. The fees are non-refundable and additional fees may be required depending on the complexity of an application. So I don't know if there are any questions from the public on that one that I could answer or the board could answer.
Lynn, maybe just a quick question. Paul Donozer from Alpha Alpha. So it does not consider the scale of the project?
Well, this.
Whether it's a small residential or a large.
That's actually a good point, Paul. The contract that we have with the engineering company is for single-family and two-family buildings. So they're small, you know, and anything larger than that, as you know, Alpha Alpha is complex, Emerson Homes, et cetera, those would go out for peer review. So that would be a separate fee depending on the complexity of those operations.
Yeah, makes sense. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Nothing else? Okay. The, okay, the next one then would be Application A. So this is the form that anyone would fill out to come before the planning and zoning boards. One of the changes, and a lot of these are just housekeeping. One of the changes is to combine this application Form A into one form. So the planning board had a Form A and the ZBA had a Form A and they were virtually identical. And they created confusion, people would call. And so now it's all in one document. So a lot of the words that you see here changing are just to refer to the fact that this application pertains to both boards. The fees, as we mentioned, are being pulled out. And instead, it just says here, please refer to the fee schedule. And at the top of the application, you'll just check off whether you're appearing before the ZBA or the planning board. The word permit has been added in here so that it's covering all applications that may be coming in. Description of applicant, we added cellphone and email address. We added the owner because often the person applying is not the owner, but that information is necessary for decisions when they're written up at the end. Again, additional words, permits or findings, so that this appears is appropriate to both boards. This supplemental Form B is now going to be eliminated. It used to be that people had to write out the information for the abutters. Now the assessor gives a complete package. So all we're saying is that that package from the assessor that is certified is attached to the application. So there's no need for our application to have its own Form B. And Form C, you can see here, this used to be in all various documents and it would tell you how many copies, paper copies you needed and where they were going. And basically, applicants do not care. They just need to know how many copies come in and we make sure they get distributed to the appropriate people. So again, up at the top, it just says, please refer to the submittal distribution requirements on either the planning board or the zoning board of appeals website. So all of this can come out. So it's really just housekeeping changes. I don't know if there are any questions on that application?
Great, great job, Lynn. It's really exciting to combine all this.
Oh, thanks, Greg. Okay, so we'll leave this one. And we'll now go to the stormwater application. And this again is housekeeping. So let's just go through. You can see here it's stormwater management and erosion control. There was a typo. Erosion control. Here, it was talking about the number of copies. Again, we're going to be more generic. Here, it was talking about the fees. It's going to refer to the fee schedule. Here, again, it was talking about copies. So we took that out. And then we added in the same information that you saw on application Form A, cell numbers, information about the owner. And that's it. Any questions from anyone on stormwater? Okay. Next one we'll go through is Planning Board Rules and regs. And what you're going to see here is that the rules and regs for the planning board and the ZBA are very similar. So the things that I mentioned here, you're also going to see in the ZBA rules and regs. Here's just a date change for the effective date if they are approved tonight. Here, this is the jurisdiction of the planning board. This is what's in the document. The responsibility for permits for the Business Park District have moved over to the ZBA. So it does not need to be in the planning board's rules and regs. The special permit for temporary accessory apartments is no longer needed. We don't have any more of those. We now have ADUs. And here, the word special is being taken out. So it's not a special permit for scenic road bylaw. It's just going to be a permit. Now, that one actually requires a bylaw change as well. So that will be a warrant article going before the ATM in May. So this will only become effective if that is accepted at the ATM and then the regulation will be updated to make that special permit a permit. The reason for doing that is that every special permit requires the supermajority. You need four out of five people to vote. And in the case of a scenic road, the planning board did not feel that was necessary. There was actually a situation where only three members had attended a particular meeting and so they weren't able to vote on the scenic road permit. And it had to be delayed for a month. So there's really no need to have it be a special permit. So they're looking to have that changed. The stormwater also says special permit. It actually never was a special permit. It was always just a permit. So this is just a cleanup right there. These are a couple of words just from KP to point to particular sections in the Mass General Law. And then we see here a couple of changes. The community development coordinator title is not used anymore. So we just put in board staff this way. No matter what the title is, it won't need to be updated in the rules and regulations. This one, because now the application has a longer name. It just was putting in all these other types of zoning relief and permits. So it's consistent with the title of the application. Coordinator title is gone. The board now meets on Wednesdays, so that was an update. This section here goes back to the number of copies. Again, you don't need to have the number of copies specified in here. It will again just refer you to the submittal distribution requirements. This is referring to the change on supplement B. So there's not a form per se. You just attach the assessor's packet. Filing fees are taken out of here and fee schedule is referred to. This is just clarifying that the board will arrange for publication of the legal notice. This is not a change. This has been going on for a while, so it's just clarifying it in the rules and regs. This is a name change. It's no longer the Board of Selectmen. It's the Select Board. And the words if pertinent were pulled out because every notice goes to the planning boards of all six surrounding towns. Permits were added in here. And this was just a typo. It was referring to the Board of Appeals in the planning board regulations. So it was changed to planning board. Name change here, permit added, permit added, permit added. And again, just an error in that it was appearing to the Board of Appeals and it should say planning board. Here's another one, planning board, planning board. Date change of the effectiveness of these rules. Form B comes out. Form C just refers to the submittal distribution requirements. And that's everything. So it really is, again, housekeeping. Any questions or?
Lynn, would it help to look at the ZBA rules now because they're?
We are. Actually, that's the next one. Yeah. And again, these are housekeeping. So date change. Certified list of abutters for the assessor. This title, again, coordinator is out. Distribution isn't specified here. It's referred to the centralized document. And this again refers to the submittal distribution document. The Form B is gone. Instead, it's the assessor's list. The filing fees are out. Just refers you to the document. Name changes for the Board of Selectmen. Board of Selectmen name change. And here, it listed planning board, it should have said the zoning board of appeals. So that was just a cleanup. Name change. Form B is out. Form C is out and it just refers to the submittal distribution requirements. So they're all the same type of changes that were made for the planning board. Any questions on that one?
Nice job on that, Lynn. It's a lot of coordinating of documents, so great job.
Thank you. Okay, so scenic rules and regs. Again, this is housekeeping. To the top. So the word special would come out and it would just be permit fees and costs. And again, down here. This refers to the fee schedule, so the actual $75 referral is gone. And here, the applicant for a scenic road permit could be the owner of the property or an individual or entity that's authorized by the owner because that often is what happens. And that's all for that one. Any questions? That one? Okay. Stormwater rules and regulations. Okay, so this one, as the planning board chair had mentioned, there were EPA regulation changes that the town is required to implement because we have an MS4 permit. And there were also changes in this document because we no longer have a stormwater coordinator. So the process that we're using and the fees, et cetera, all of those needed to change. So when I get down to the EPA changes, I cannot tell you exactly what they refer to. Martha has a much better grip on that. All we know is that the changes were given to us. We were told what wording we had to put in and then the EPA had to approve it. So we made the changes with the help of MAPC and a grant that we received. And then we sent it to the EPA and they approved it. So KP, our legal counsel, was not going to touch it. But if you have any questions about it, I'm sure Martha could answer it better than I could ever. Let me go through a couple of things.
It's very technical material. And so I put our trust in the EPA and an MAPC, you know, for having produced this.
Okay, so the couple of changes here, a certificate of completion. This is a. Okay, so the couple of changes here, a certificate of completion. Um, this is a document that the town, um, would generate upon receipt of a final inspection report by the applicant's engineer. So because we do not have an engineer, like we used to, to go out and look at the stormwater system and say, yes, that is installed and built according to the plan was approved by the planning board. So now this will be, the onus will be on the applicant's engineer to sign off and put their license, their reputation behind saying that is exactly what the plan said and I'm going to, um, you know, stand by that. And then, um, this would be a document that we issue to say that we've received the final inspection report. So this will be referred to a little bit later in this document. And that was wording courtesy of our town council. Um, okay, again, here, um, the, it was specifying or clarifying about the fees. So the planning board application fee shall be waived. Um, it does not mean that the engineer fee is waived. So it was specifying, um, here. And in, um, item C, it says the filing fee shall be waived. That was taken out because the fee for the engineer has to be paid. So we just didn't want any confusion. So, um, we tried to clarify or remove. And again, all the fees would be listed on the fee schedule. Here, we just tried to make generic the number of copies again. It did say two before. Uh, now it's going to say such number of copies as is required. So you would go to the, um, submittal distribution document to see what is actually required. Um, this is new, um, the board had talked about this. And again, this is tied into having no stormwater coordinator. So a copy of the septic plan that has been approved by the board of health must be submitted with the stormwater management and erosion control application. In the past, our stormwater coordinator sat beside the board of health. And he could just lean over and say, was that septic system approved? And let me take a look at it. We cannot do that right now. So we need a copy of the approved septic plan that will be sent to our engineer. So he knows what is on the plan. The stormwater plan is in fact the system that's been approved by the board of health and the location of the tanks. So the leaching field would not be moved at a later date. The filing application, again, we refer back to the distribution document. That's just cleaning up. That sentence should not have been here and maintenance was capitalized. Uh, the electronically formatted version is out because now you have the submittal, um, summary document. As I mentioned earlier, the applicant's engineer is the one who has to sign off that the stormwater system was installed according to the plan. However, if the town feels like it's had a great deal of difficulty, and we have in a couple of cases working with an engineer or a particular homeowner, um, the town wants the ability to go out and do the inspection themselves as well. And that's, uh, what this gets to, um, that we may have access to the grounds for installation throughout various, you know, points of, of the, the stormwater system being installed. And if town does not get the access, it can deny or revoke an issued permit. This talks about the engineering fees. It's just a little clearer because now we do have a, an engineering fee where before we did not. Um, this re- uh, reference to application fees is out because we do have the fee document. Um, when we collect, um, fees for a peer review, they have to be deposited in an escrow account, not a passbook. So we had to update that. This statement here says that failure of the board to take action upon a stormwater application within forty-five days um, basically says it's deemed approved if, if the board doesn't, uh, issue a decision within forty-five days. Um, town council said that, um, this should be removed. There's no legal requirement, uh, to include a constructive approval provision. And often the stormwater plans take much longer than forty-five days. It's back forth, back forth. And so this is, um, kind of putting the board in an untenable situation. Um, so that is recommended to be removed. And here is the wording that the EPA put in. So these are verbatim, um, from their new regulations. And so any engineer putting together a stormwater system would now, um, reference this language. And this old language will be coming out. Uh, again, this gets back to, uh, the applicant allowing the town access their property for inspections. Just repeats that. And this refers to, um, that final inspection and getting a certificate of completion to show it was installed according to the plan. Voluntary access. The inspections, that was a capitalized Commonwealth. Um, and this is if the homeowner fails to maintain the stormwater system, then the planning board may pursue injunctive relief in a court. If the town needs to take action to say prevent, um, stormwater running onto a neighbor's property or, or some other damage, um, and pursue, uh, collection of associated costs. That was our legal team. We don't have a stormwater coordinator, so it's the planning board, um, here for enforcement. Uh, this again refers to, uh, the board being able to pursue injunctive relief. And that's it. Any questions on that one? Okay, um, there are now six little tiny sections within the subdivision uh, control rules and regulations. And again, this is all housekeeping. So at the end, after the public hearing closes, these, the chairman, the, the planning board chairman would like to have voted on as a group, um. They all pertain to subdivision control. So article one and two. Uh, just an amended date. A, amended address, email address. The fee schedule comes out. And that is all. So it was primarily, um, removing that fee schedule. Any questions on that? Comments? So, okay, article four. This is changing the submittal, you know, referencing the submittal document, submittal document. Submittal document. Um, this fee is pulled out because it is on the fee schedule. Submittal document. Name change. We do not have a highway surveyor. We have a highway superintendent and a select. Select board name change. Submittal distribution, again, referring to the centralized document. All that comes out. Any questions on those housekeeping changes? Hey, the checklists. This is adding email and cellphone to the applicant, the owner of record, the designer and the engineer and the surveyor. Assistant with the other applications. And then these are just name changes. We no longer have these commissions. We have, um, superintendents. And again, name changes. Any questions on the checklist? The form C. Um, this is just now referring, uh, to the fact that we don't have a form B that you just attached the certified list of abudders. Any questions on that one? One of the simplest one. Form D, almost there, two more. Name changes. That's all for that one. And form E. Was a name change, select board and water superintendent. Any questions? Okay, that's everything. We just went through all the changes. I don't know if there's any last minute questions or comments from anyone otherwise. Or any discussion amongst the board. Otherwise you could close the hearing and we could do the voting.
Um, I'm just checking one thing, Lynn. Um. We did have a highway superintendent, but, uh, it's now the DPW, is it not?
Uh, well, we still have a highway superintendent and then we have a water superintendent. Um, and I think the title in there is also perhaps DPW, um. He, he definitely goes by the, um, the highway superintendent as well, um.
Okay, I, I think it's okay because he is officially the highway. He, he handles the highway and park and cemetery section of DPW. Um, but I, uh, just thought I'd bring that up in case it would, in case it is an issue. I mean, I think it's clear who it is, you know?
It's kind of the, the highway hat that he wears, um, in his DPW roles. I mean, we could change it to, like, I could look up if there's another title.
No, I was just looking and I don't see another title. So we can leave it that way.
Okay. All right. So if there are no other comments from anybody, we could, um, most, take a motion to close the public hearing.
Uh, Bob, do you have anything you'd like to add to this?
Um, are you able to hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Ah, good, great. Um, the only thing I want to add and I apologize for my technical issues before. Um, is that, um, we have our two new zoning board members who are in attendance this evening. Um, and I do want to recognize them and thank them for attending and thank them for agreeing to serve on the board. So, um, Rosalie DiCipio and Glenn Colran are both here this evening. And I wanted to welcome them. So other than that, and the fact that Lynn has done just an extraordinary job putting this all together, I, I, the only thing I have to say is I move to close the zoning boards section of the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, well, um, we'll, we'll call for that and then we'll move over to, um, Martha. So, uh, David Merrill.
Yes.
Uh, Dave Moniz.
Yes.
Jody Kleineff.
Yes.
And Bob Moriarty.
Yes.
Okay. And for the planning board, is there a motion?
You have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move.
Seconded.
Okay, uh, all in favor, let's do a roll call. Lynn?
Um, Steve Hall.
Aye.
Jenny Merrill.
Aye.
Greg Mellinger.
Aye.
Zilly Boujou.
Aye.
Martha Morrison.
Aye.
Okay. Um, all right, it, it's, um, we start at the top, the submittal distribution requirements. That is, um, a motion required, uh, by, uh, by both boards. Um, and there were no changes. Actually, there were no changes anywhere. So everything is as presented, which makes it easier.
Well, I think a question is, do we need to vote on each one of these separately? Um, i- is that required or is this something that we can vote on accepting all of the changes first? Because we do have some track change, uh, documents, um, and then vote for the entire, vote them all under one vote.
Excepted, um, you, you could do that for the ones where the planning board needs to vote. Um, the ZBA does not need to vote on the planning board documents. Okay, so i- if you want to do the joint ones first, so that would be a motion to accept the submittal distribution fee schedule in application A, that would be both boards voting on it.
Move to accept as presented. Second.
Oh.
Wait, wait, um, Lynn, don't we each, not both boards, but each board?
Each board needs to vote. So, um, it looks like this one got started with planning board. So we'll do the planning board vote first and then the ZBA will vote for those three things, the three documents. Is that what you mean, Bob?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, cause I know Dave Moniz tried to second it, so.
Yeah.
We're not, we're not gonna let him cross.
I'll wait for the zoning one.
So Steve Hall made the motion for planning. Is there a second from planning?
I'll second.
Okay, silly. Okay, and so we'll do a roll call, um, vote. Steve Hall.
Aye.
Jenny Merrill.
Aye.
Greg Mellinger.
Aye.
Zilly Boujou.
Aye.
Martha Morrison.
Aye.
Okay, and for the ZBA. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, um, and roll call, uh, David Merrill.
Yes.
Dave Moniz.
Yes.
Jody Kleineff.
Yes.
And Bob Moriarty.
Yes.
And that was the submittal, the fee and application A. Okay. Um, then we have, uh, four, three, four. Um, we have the, why don't we do the ZBA rules and regs and that is just ZBA? Your motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, no, no, okay, all right. Um, roll call is, um, David Merrill.
Yes.
Dave Moniz.
Yes.
Jody Kleineff.
Yes.
And Bob Moriarty.
Yes.
Okay, that is all that the ZBA has to vote on. So the remaining are planning board. So the, um, planning board, um, we already did the joint ones. So the ones you have to do just by yourself is the stormwater application. The planning board rules and regulations. The scenic rules and regulations. And the, the six, um, documents, uh, for subdivision control. Is there a motion to accept those?
We're moved.
Secondly.
Um, Steve. Okay, so roll call is Steve Hall.
Aye.
Jenny Merrill. Um, I can't see Jenny here. Are you there, Jenny? She's muted. Okay, that's a, an I. Um, Greg Mellinger.
Aye.
Zilly Boujou.
Aye.
Martha Morrison.
Aye.
Okay. All right, you're all done.
Wow, thank you so much, Lynn. Very well.
Thank you, Lynn.
Yeah.
Yes, Lynn, wow.
Yeah, zoning board members, thank you so much for joining us and making this all possible. Uh, thank you very much.
Do we need to adjourn or are we all sent just to go?
You guys need to adjourn, um, as ZBA adjourns and the planning board will continue on.
Yep, I'll make a motion for the zoning board to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
As, okay, um, roll call, David Merrill?
Yes.
Dave Moniz?
Yes.
Jody Kleineff?
Yes.
And Bob Moriarty?
I think we lost Bob again.
We lost Bob again.
Okay, so that was still a forum, so that's three. Three to zero, you are adjourned.
Thank you, guys.
Bye, everyone. Thank you. Great job. Bye, everyone. Thank you. Okay. Now, is Paul still with us? There you are, Paul Donhauser. Thank you so much for your patience, you know, as we went through that. Um, and, um, you're here, uh, to, uh, deal with the peer review matter for your stormwater application. Um, and I think, uh, Lynn, you have shared this with Paul already, I believe.
Yes. Yep.
Okay, so are we? Here we go.
Um, this was the scope of work and the fee was a total of seventy nine hundred. That would be both for the, um, review of the, uh, stormwater plan and I believe, um, site visits, um, before, um, the system goes in for a ground check and then after the system is installed.
Correct.
Okay, Paul, would you like to comment on this?
No, yeah, I'm supportive of it. Um, thanks for having that put together. I, um, happy to get that process. Just let me know, um, where to escrow the money and we'll get this, get this moving.
Right, Lynn, I believe you said that this would be available for Paul to sign, uh, tomorrow.
Yeah, down at the town clerk, Paul, she'll have a copy of the escrow agreement if you can sign that and then just leave a, um, check made out to the town of Topsfield for the seventy nine hundred with her and we'll take it from there. And then, um, later that day, we will, um, send the stormwater plan over, uh, to Boebrecht, uh, to begin their work.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Okay, very good.
Do you want to vote at all, um, Martha, or just agreeing with?
I mean, we typically, typically we do review this. I mean, we're reviewing it now. Um, and, uh, I think it would be okay if a member of the board would like to make a motion to proceed, um, you know, with this, uh, engineering peer review.
Yeah, well, we definitely have to proceed with the peer review and there's, there's no way around that. I did a quick look at the application. Uh, I did not see a drawing that referenced. Um, I had to piece together on the two topographical drawings that were there, the existing, or should say pre-existing and, um, planned. Where the calculations for water, uh, the stormwater, uh, actually came from. I eventually figured out that they were from the various, I'm assuming, um, uh, cumulative, um, wet, um, what am I thinking of? This, uh, sump drains. Drywells, I'm sorry. My apologies, I couldn't think of that. I didn't see an overall, um, proposed plan that, that really indicated that. It was referenced early on in the application. Again, that's just something I noticed. I'm sure the PR engineer will be able to piece it together as well.
Right, well, if we could have a motion, um, to, uh, proceed with the peer review for two forty-nine Raleigh Bridge Road?
So moved.
Hey, is there a second?
Second.
Great, all in favor? Okay, roll call, Zilly?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Um, now, I, I know that this is all going to get reviewed, uh, by, uh, Boebrecht, uh, but Paul, I had a question for you. Um, this plan shows seventy parking spaces. Is that correct?
Uh, that sounds correct as far as what's designed for, um, the new parking area, correct? But obviously it's a large property and there's existing parking party on the site, so.
Uh, well, but the, uh, the actual number of spots being created and actually shown as parking spaces on the site plan, the number is seventy.
Yes, sure.
And, uh, there's also, and I couldn't quite make it out, there's, um, an area that directly in front of the, uh, the building, uh, that looks like there's a new, um, connection to Raleigh Bridge Road. Are you planning an additional entrance off Raleigh Bridge Road or is it just not clear on that plan?
No, no, it'll be the existing entrance, that's correct, yeah.
Right, well, that's what I saw.
There was asphalt or bituminous that had this parallel road to Raleigh Bridge and a lot of that taken up to remove some of the, uh, impervious surface to, just to try to get more, uh, sustainable.
Right, okay, well, that's fine, uh, because I saw the two existing entrances were still there on the plan and that this other feature, um, was not clear as to what it is, you know, so, but I'm sure Brobeck will figure all of that out. Um, okay, so now, um, this will go to Brobeck and hopefully he'll be able to proceed quickly, uh, and get this moving. Um, are, are you stopping your earthworks now, given the weather?
Yeah, yeah, it's kind of, yeah, yeah, it's all interior work now. I think, um, you know, with the main contractor, I have seen the, some of the contractors driving over that, that area. So if you go by there today, it looks like they've almost created their own path. So I'm, uh, was over there today, um, after a bit of travel, just talking to the main contractor, A, to make sure that the road is, is kept clean. Um, and B, that we try to get a little more organization for the trade contractors that are working on the interiors to finish some of that stuff up, so, um, yep.
Okay, uh, very good. Now, um, I think I saw one downspout, um, as I drove by. Do you have gutters and downspouts on all of the buildings?
Yes, yep. So those have all, those have all been added. I mean, this is happening real time, but the, um, the, if you're approaching from the Topsfield side, heading towards the Danvers side, um, the first building you would approach on the right, which was a garage and is being repurposed as a brewery, that would have a downspout. I believe it is installed currently on the Raleigh Bridge Road, but also on the Route ninety-five road. Um, the next building you would have, which was the legacy, uh, Farmer Winery that was there with the Adelman's before, uh, again, all new roofing, that also would have downspouts, uh, wrapped around that, uh, particular building. So those two buildings that are essentially been recreated would have downspouts.
Very good, because I think the engineer shows them, um, feeding into drywells around the building. Um, and so I was concerned, I hadn't seen any gutters, looked at your architect's plans and indeed they indicated there would be. And lo and behold, I saw one as I was driving down the street, so I was happy to see that happening.
I would say it's been a, um, an interesting project in that the hope originally was to sweep the floors and turn on the lights and sell the wine that we purchased, but, um, say the infrastructure probably wasn't at the, uh, at an appropriate, um, level to, um, to open to the public. So, we've had to, uh, do quite a bit of work, um, little bit of reverse engineering, quite honestly, you know, it was, uh, the first, uh, I think you know the history, the, there was a purchase and sale signed by Ben, the son, and, uh, with the developer. Um, we were able to get it there and pitch to try to keep the farm versus turning it into the single family, uh, homes they were pushing. Um, and, uh, the only, the only, the only caveat is we had to wire the money and sign the deal within a week. Um, so which prohibited us from due diligence and so I had to rely on the, the incredible master plan that you all put together, um, which to me showed a commitment to, you know, preserve the farm and bring more community space together. And then just a quick meeting with the town administrator to say, is this really the direction the town is moving, this master plan? And so that essentially was the confidence I had to move forward. Um, I think unfortunately, you're familiar with the property. We brought our due diligence team on the site with our structural engineering for us to just look at the integrity of the buildings. And that first building, the milk barn, um, he said, you can't even allow anyone on this property right now. Um, you know, this thing would, could collapse. Um, so we, we've kind of worked backwards from that to, okay, we've, we, we, we did a demo permit abatement, get that stabilized, and then went to flush the toilets and found out they were flushing into the back field with no septic. Um, so therefore we went forward with a septic. Then we went forward with, you know, we were going to use the existing structures, inspected the foundations, there were no foundations. So I can tell you, it's been like just pulling on a string. Um, there was no, I mean, we're not in, in institutional investor, you know, it's me and one other person. Um, and, uh, so there was no master plan to come in and recreate all of this. We were hoping to just leverage what was there, but uh, unfortunately, there's just, there wasn't a lot that was salvageable other than the footprints, so.
I'm very familiar with the property, very, very familiar with it for many, many years. So, um, does anyone else have any questions, uh, for Paul while we have him here? You've probably heard that we've discussed the project and we, I think all agree that it would be lovely to get this up and running. Um, and the, those, um, you know, feelings were expressed at our last meeting. Um, so we wish you well and probably have, uh, some regular, uh, patrons once you get going, you know?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we're working through the process and appreciate the support and, uh, obviously trying to work with everyone. Um, we had an unfortunate situation where, you know, the original notice via butters got lost in the mail, unfortunately, right? And so I think there was a little bit of a, a time lapse, but since then I've worked hard to meet with the neighbors and, um, I think the last CBA meeting was a good one where we heard all the concerns and I essentially, um, we agreed to push things out a little bit. We're almost done with the acoustic study, almost done with the lighting study, and the traffic analysis is, is ongoing. So we will complete all of those elements over the next few months and make sure that everything is, is done appropriately. So appreciate the, uh, support and, um, patience.
Very good, and hopefully you'll have your stormwater permit before you start, you are able to start moving dirt around again, you know?
Of course, yeah, yeah.
Um, okay, uh, anyone, anything? No, any member of the public? Let's see, we have some visitors. Um, okay, well, our next issue, uh, is a similar one. You know, that, um, if you want to stick around, Paul, and listen, you're welcome to. Um, we have a property, everyone, it's on one thirty-four Central Street, that's its official address. Um, it was created and some may, Steve may remember this, we, this was an ANR lot that was created, um, I think in two thousand and seventeen or so, something like that. Um, and it has been sold, uh, and the people who have purchased it, uh, have been clearing vast tracts of land, cutting down trees, bringing in fill, grading, um, uh, it, it's an odd situation. Um, they, they put a quonset hut up on the house, on the property. Um, and, uh, but bottom line is that they have altered over seventy-five hundred square feet of, uh, land without a permit. And, uh, so it's important that we do something. Uh, that particular property has a significant wetland, uh, potential fertile pool. I think it may be an official fertile pool down by, uh, the frontage on Central Street. Um, it does have some, uh, erosion protection that was put up a long time ago. Uh, but there are lots of trees that have come down and it's really, you know, it's, it's a real problem. Um, they're accessing the property from High Street, even though they don't have access from High Street, uh, but that's something that, um, is not our stormwater concern. Uh, so I, I think, uh, that it would be appropriate, uh, in, in particularly because they do not need a building permit, they're not trying to build anything, they're just cutting and clearing and dredging and grading and, um, all of that, uh, that we need to notify them, uh, that they need a stormwater permit. Thoughts? I mean, I think we should do exactly, you know, what we did, uh, with Alfalfa Farm.
We have to.
Send them a cease and desist, the same, basically the same letter as we sent to Alfalfa Farm and tell them that they have to stop doing what they're doing. Um, the, uh, there are, as I say, there are these traffic issues, but we just basically have to get them to stop doing what they're doing, period. And get them to apply for a stormwater, an erosion control permit.
Yeah, I totally agree, Martha.
And so.
Same.
Yeah, uh, this is, this is one of the, um, uh, the loopholes in, um, the stormwater, uh, bylaw. We did have one other situation, uh, that is, if someone is just clearing land, if they're not applying for a building permit or a septic permit, if they're not going to, uh, Con's Con, um, it is very likely that they don't even know that they need a stormwater permit because there would be no point of contact. Uh, but I understand that the building inspector who brought this to our attention is actually telling them now that they need a stormwater permit, so we should be following up with a letter. What do we think?
I, I agree. I saw, I, last time I drove by, they were just clearing. And I thought they might just be clearing, you know, we have an, a by right agricultural, um, stance in town. I thought they, maybe they're clearing and they're gonna, I don't know, do a little hayfield. But, um, yeah, I went, drove by yesterday and there's machinery and as you said, it's not, I don't know if it's a quonset hut or whether it's a temporary type of hut, but it's some sort of big storage shed.
They say they're growing geraniums in it.
Okay.
They will, they haven't started yet.
Oh, they haven't started yet, that they're planning, I mean, that is hard. I would consider an appropriate greenhouse for growing geraniums. I mean, uh, where's the light, where's the heat, where's the, you know, where's the water? I mean, th- this is all very strange. So that's what they're saying. But again, our issue is stormwater and, uh, we need to.
Do we know when the building inspector talked to them and if they heated that?
Apparently he's been talking with them on and off for a bit because, uh, it's not at all clear what they're doing, you know?
Yeah.
When did you last talk with Ray?
I'm sorry?
When did you last speak with Ray about this? Was it this morning or, yeah, today?
Yeah, he, he left, uh, word for them. He couldn't reach them in person, um, so he left something on the voicemail, but he's gonna try again.
It may be, uh, there was some suggestion that they maybe plan to build a house there. Um, which is fine, but they need to figure out a proper access for the house. And if they're going to build a house, maybe that's why they're doing all of this clearing and grading and, and everything. Um, yeah. No permit.
Yeah, I, I remember several years back, I don't think it's this owner, but a previous owner was trying to build two, or have two lots designated there with that old, I'm gonna call it a right of way, but there was an old pathway.
It's an old, uh, cart path.
Cart path, right, just next to the parking lot, um, to Masconomet Rehab.
Right.
And, um, it, it, which is always lovely, you know, it's stone wall lined. But we explained to the owner at that point that that was not a public way. And you couldn't have access over it.
No, it's an abandoned, um, piece of, um, the, whatever path system was in Topsfield. Um, from what I can tell, um, it was long gone before nineteen ten because of the nineteen ten atlas of Topsfield, it's not there. Um, and that, um, there, uh, there was a kind of windy before Central Street existed. Um, before High Street, I mean, this goes way back to eighteen seventy-two. Um, there was kind of a windy little path that, uh, the only piece of which remains is Perkins Lane. Hmm. That, you know, that one tiny little bit that's Perkins Lane is the last vestige of that wandering path. And so, um, uh, uh, I'm sorry, I'm reading a comment here. Uh, uh, I'm sorry, I'm reading a comment here. Uh, in any case, uh, it certainly isn't a public way. Uh, no one owns it. Uh, as a result, it's uh, owned to the center of the road by Maskonomit. And by the resident of Washington's on High Street. Uh, because part of that property is on that, um, you know, that uh, little strip and then of course this lot. So, so the access issues are, are really issues for, you know, the building inspector to deal with. You know, for, you know, as to whether or not they can build a house there. I don't know. But it's one lot and it's fronted just on Central Street.
Right.
Do we have a draft letter like we did for the other?
It would be the same one as we sent to Alfalfa Farm.
Right, so just the same, just changing the names. The motion to send a letter, that letter?
I'll second that motion.
That's my very formal motion.
Okay.
Your formality overwhelms.
Okay, so we have, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I was reading something in the chat.
Yeah, I just saw that.
Yeah, um, okay. All right. Well, let's finish this business and then we can turn to that. So we have a motion and a second to send the same letter. Okay, we'll, we'll call uh, Zilly.
Hi.
Jenny. Greg.
Hi.
Steve.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Um, okay, um, uh, Ms. Cullinan, uh, we see your uh, concern here. The, this particular board's only involvement in the project is stormwater. And as you know, we are requiring that a stormwater application uh, be submitted and reviewed by an engineer. Um, to be sure that uh, stormwater and erosion control is being handled. Um, the concerns that you mentioned are those for the zoning board of appeals. Uh, because they are the ones who are dealing with the uh, the actual conference and event facility permit. Um, and so I, I think we appreciate, you know, the concerns of uh, the residents at Amberwood. And other butters. Um, but unfortunately, uh, our job is simply stormwater. You know, and uh, making sure that our laws are being followed. Um, uh, you know, in accordance with, with the, our EPA requirements. Uh, so I hope that answers some of your concerns.
Madam Chair, may I ask a point of order question?
silly, I couldn't hear you.
Oh, I have a point of order question. Um, just on committees that I've been on in the past, we didn't really consider the chat to be official commu- um. Cause for Zoom forum uh, during public meetings that were not public hearings. And the, in committees I've been in the pa- on in the past, we just discounted the chat because it creates confusion and it doesn't show up on the video. And you can't, nobody else, somebody watching this someday has no idea what you're referring to.
Right, well, perhaps, but.
So I just wanted to see if this committee has a different.
We have tried to address, you know, our concerns that are expressed in the chat. Simply because many people are not as uh, familiar with Zoom. Uh, that they are, you know, are not clear as to when they can speak. Um, we have the same thing when we were dealing with South Main Street with the neighbors there. Um, who felt that they weren't being heard because they couldn't get into the meeting. They didn't know how to use Zoom and all of that. So, uh, this board, um, I think we've tried always to be as responsive as we can. Uh, if a citizen expresses a concern, um, and, and I.
Of the chat, so just the content, the reason in the past we didn't was because of the recording of it.
Yes.
Somehow captured in the minutes, I suppose.
We could also repeat whatever the comment is and then it's in the video.
You know what? As, as clerk, I would be very happy to read that comment.
Yeah.
This is a comment came in on our Zoom chat at eight-ten PM by Melanie Cullinan. I really don't think that the residents of Amberwood, uh, butters to the Alfalfa project. Have exit, have access to these meetings and can share their concerns because of computer slash access issues. This development is unfair to them. The traffic, the, the litter, the noise. And then there's a little frowny face.
Thank you, Steve.
I think that, that's a good solution, but Zilla, you bring up a very good point. As these are public records recorded, if something comes up in chat that we're going to discuss or uh, address, it should be. In the record.
Right.
Thank you, sorry.
It's a very good way of dealing with it. Uh, but as I say, we've always tried to be very responsive as however we can. Uh, you know, to members of the public, uh, and to. We do and where they, they can best get some answers. That's all. Okay, so we are done with um, one thirty-four Central Street. Um, take a ride by folks, you can take a look at what's going on. Um, and if you go on Central Street, you will see where this little strip, um, the old path. You know, i- is located. Um, but it's, uh, as I say, it's, it has no way, a public way. I mean, this is not, you know, public road. Okay, our next matter is the meeting calendar. Lynn?
So, um, I sent it out to everybody. Did everyone have a chance to look at it? It's, it's uh, consistent with the first Wednesday of every month, except there might have been, um. Don't have my calendar right with me. Um, a, a little adjustments if it were around fourth of July. If it bumps into a holiday week, then we just push it off uh, to the following week. But most of these, I think, all fell within the, the first Wednesday. Did they look good for everybody?
Good for me.
Good for me.
We already have people planning to attend your January and February meetings and they were calling to find out what your dates were. Okay, is there a motion to approve then? The calendar for twenty-twenty-six?
So moved.
Second, second? Greg seconded or Jenny did? Okay, roll call Jenny? Aye, okay, silly.
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, now we have planning board minutes of November fifth. Any comments?
I admit, I did not read the minutes. My apologies. So I have no comments.
By the way, another chat just came in from Melanie, I don't know.
Yes, we'll, we'll take that up in a minute. And any, anyone else have any comments? Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Alright, if someone liked a second?
A second.
Okay, silly second, all in favor? Steve?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
silly?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
Yeah, and I vote aye.
Steve, were you an aye or an abstain then, since you didn't read them? You were an aye?
I was an aye.
Okay.
Because I trust my other fellow planning board members. For, for the most part.
Okay, uh, just to make, uh, if we're going to take up the chat again, um. We're sold that the residents are concerned and should you know, this project seems um. Uh, super, but maybe it's not for the neighbor. Have you considered that? Uh, well, uh, I think we're aware of how the neighborhood feels about this. And again, our concern is stormwater. You know, that's all we have authority over. Uh, and so that's our answer for that. Okay, next me, next matter of business is proposed bylaw modifications. They keep growing. Yep. Um, the uh, the first is uh, a couple of tiny changes to the ADU. Bylaw that we went to town meeting with last year. Um, and that, um. The Attorney General did not like our uh, disapproval of trailers and RVs. Instead, what they are willing to approve uh, is something that um. Is anything not mounted on a foundation. So if you have a real foundation and you have a trailer mounted on it. Or for some reason have taken the wheels off an RV and have put it on top of a foundation. Uh, that, uh, they're, they're willing to go with that. So that's what town council suggested that we do. And as far as the parking, um, the reason that they disapproved the parking requirement. Um, was because when we said all ADUs need a parking space. Apparently they didn't truly understand that we are nowhere near any public transportation. So we have to clarify that uh, with the language that you see here.
Okay, should, should we consider putting the word permanent?
No.
Foundation?
No.
No.
We can't do that?
We didn't like permanent at all.
No, the ADU didn't approve permanent. Um, so this is the kind of thing that they're willing to do.
So I can put my car on cinder blocks and call it an accessory dwelling unit? That's what I'm reading into this.
Wouldn't that be lovely?
Hey.
Okay, um, so that's, that's, you know, certainly one thing. We can tidy that up. It's not, it's not horrible, you know, let's put it that way. Um, and then, let's see. The zoning board brought up the issue of restaurants uh, that right now. A full-service restaurant uh, needs a different permit if it's going to do takeout. You know, they need the full-service restaurant, but they also need something for takeout. So the zoning board uh, is suggesting that we review these restaurant. Uh, definitions and either add something such as where food is primarily ordered and served at tables. You know, which would allow for the takeout, uh, or even combine if we scroll down, there's another. Uh, where, um.
Yeah, that's um, separate from restaurant full service though, if you want to.
Right, that's a different one, but as part of the restaurant idea that we have different categories of restaurants. And two of them might be able to be combined because they basically have the same requirements. So.
Um, Martha, this primarily, I actually just put in, uh, that wasn't from the CBA. They did suggest just what you say, that it be modified slightly so that you could do takeout. And then looking at that limited service definition, I threw that in as an option where food is primarily ordered. That way, it does allow for some takeout, not as the primary. It's just an option to start discussion.
Okay, no, that's a, that's a good suggestion. Can we scroll down a little bit more?
Um, yeah.
Anybody has comments or questions about any of this?
Um, I, there was, yeah. Um, just a, a note that I had on the language. In section B, article PB two, which is on page three, I think. Generally paid before customer eats it. Just struck me as rather odd language. Um, could we, before customer consumes? The. You know, uh, was generally paid for before consumption? Before product consumption or?
Before the customer receives the food, because that's.
I, I, I just, I let out a giggle when I read that because it just sounded very animal houses. Before the customer eats it.
Before customer is served?
Yeah.
Maybe.
Yeah, I just thought it might be looked at.
Okay, I think tonight, um, you know, we don't need to uh, do all of the details. We need to get our heads wrapped around what the scope of.
Yeah.
Us, you know, actually is. Can we come down?
Yeah, whoops, sorry, that was a strange curse. Um, okay.
I think Lynn has included the uh, parking requirements for our information. Generally, um, they, there's a difference between uh, Business Village. And uh, Route One uh, for parking requirements. Um, and then, um. The, excuse me, um, the Business Village has all various options for parking. There's on-street parking, uh, you know, all the way from the common, all the way down. And uh, yet on Route One, there is no on-street parking. So anything on Route One has to be able to accommodate all of the cars that are anticipated. You know, uh, being involved with the property. So that's why there is a difference between the Business Village and uh, Route One. Uh, the question is whether if full-service restaurants start doing takeout or they do have takeout. Does this have any impact on the uh, parking requirement?
It looks like the takeout people need newer parking spaces in the Business Village. Full service needed twelve spaces, takeout needed only eight.
Well, exactly. Yeah, for the Business Village, the requirement is lower, uh, regardless of what type of restaurant it is.
Does this?
Even if you add, oh, sorry.
Does this mean parking spaces that are owned by the restaurant or does this mean access to parking spaces?
Uh, well, typically it's uh, on the property. Well, certainly on Route One, it has to be on the property. Unless they have an agreement with the neighbor, you know, a neighboring business. Um, in the Business Village, uh, you can claim. Um, uh, parking within five hundred feet. So if there's a public parking lot.
Yeah.
Or a parking lot that you have access to, uh, say the Park Street parking lot, um, and the old DPW. You know, building had a public parking area. Um, and that's a, there's a five hundred foot. Um, uh, distance, uh, that if you can prove you have access to parking.
Mm-hmm.
Public parking, the five hundred feet, those spaces can come.
Okay.
But Martha is, uh, I mean, are you allowed to park on Route? Is there a restriction about parking on Route One or the shoulder?
No, you can't park on Route One.
You can't.
There are signs, uh, in fact, it was so problematic down uh, across from the four sixty-six. Uh, the people were parking on that wide shoulder on Route One by the Ponte Vecchio uh, mall. Uh, there now are signs there, you know, state highway, no parking.
Yeah, I, I've, I've never seen it in, in our business district, though, on Route One, no parking.
Uh, they don't have no parking signs because it's really no place to park. Uh, this particular area had a very wide, has a wide um, shoulder. Uh, next to the mall, you know, the, the Ponte Vecchio Mall and Route One. And there, there were cars parking there all the time to go to four, four sixty-six. So now they posted it, no parking. So I don't, I mean, again, it's something to think about. Uh, do we need to add parking spaces?
Hmm.
I don't know. Well, again, let's contemplate the matter.
I don't think it should change the full-service parking. Requirements.
They, they require more upfront now already than where you do takeout.
Exactly, and. If, if a business, um. Applies as a full-service restaurant with a takeout option. They're not applying as a takeout restaurant with a modest full-service option. And perhaps we should think about weighing this as, as a. Kind of a, as a proportion as to what kind of business they're actually doing. But we don't know that. That's, that's up to the applicant to tell us. Does that, is, is what I'm saying make any sense?
Yes, it does. It does make sense. Now, I do know that there is discussion. Um, I, in the Highway Garage Project that includes takeout. It includes full service, includes, you know, our whole range of food options that they are uh, calculating their. It includes full service, includes, you know, our whole range of food options that they are uh calculating their parking. Uh, you know, to accommodate all of those different options. And I'm just not sure of how they're doing it, and it's what the ZBA is going to be asking them to do about that. Uh, but uh much of this arose because um of the proposal for the Highway Garage. You know, a full-service restaurant, a takeout option, um, and of course, the catering and so on. So that they're being, they're going to be calculating um parking. Uh, and I don't know how they're going to manage it for the takeout. I don't know what formula they're going to use.
Well, and it's very interesting that their lot is, has what was formerly public parking spots currently. Because I, I just remember when the, there was a parking study done pre-pandemic, I don't remember the date. And I remember being impressed by that because it definitely gave me a lot of information about the amount of public parking that is available. Downtown, over by the rail trail along the road, and now by the. I asked before, just, but it does make, I didn't, I didn't fully.
Well, the problem is that the parking, there are enough parking spaces for all of the current uses, you know. Three different parking studies have demonstrated that. Uh, the problem is that they're not in the places where people want them to be. Oh, so that uh people all want to park directly in front of the building that they're going to. And so the idea of walking from the Park Street Parking Lot, you know, or anything like that.
It always makes me chuckle a little bit when, because then you go to dinner in Beverly and you'll walk several blocks to get where you need to. Anyway.
Okay, now here's a, an interesting one. Um, the conference and event facility. The whole purpose of the conference and event facility uh bylaw. Was to make it possible for historic structures, you know, to be used as conference and event facilities. Um, and uh, so it was kind of a preservation bylaw initially, that's how it started. Um, and it, we've had everything from the Cabot Theater people trying to put a live concert venue. Under Conference and Event Facility up on, you know, um, Fairview Farm, uh, and. We have a tent, wedding tent at Conamara. We have a wedding tent being proposed for Alfalfa. Uh, so the, uh, the first one, um, the, the applicant. Withdraw the application, so it never went through the test. But uh, the, the suggestion here is that we refine the conference and event facility. Definition to reflect the purpose that it was supposed to, you know, serve. So it would be located in an historic building. Uh, and uh, this was all supposed to be indoors, you know, for conference and events. And there never was supposed to be open to the public, you know, buying tickets. It was supposed to be for private events, so that a party would rent the place for a wedding, a birthday, an anniversary. You know, a business luncheon, you know, whatever it might be, uh, but that it was never perceived as some kind of entertainment center. Or, you know, a place where you could sell tickets for movies or tickets for, you know, anything. You know, that it was supposed to be kind of uh discreet and quiet and not a bother to the neighborhood. Uh, so, uh.
And Martha, what, why would a, I mean, you know, the company I used to run used to have, you know, very elegant. Um, you know, meet or events, you know, where it would be, you know, suit and tie and it's indoors. And people would be spending, you know, money to be there for a twenty to, you know, a hundred-person event. Why, why does that bother you that someone is, you know, when, when you think of tickets, you, you immediately go to a carnival? But, you know, the reality is that the events business can be very refined and very.
And there are plenty, there's no reason why some uh company, an organization. Uh, can't sell tickets to their members or to whoever it is that they want to include. Um, my, our concern has been having a, for instance, the Fairview Farm Concert Venue. Where there was a ticket booth, you know, off Route One, and the people would go in and buy tickets and. You, you know, that it was all outdoors and, and potentially very disruptive to the neighborhood. Uh, and the reason that they withdrew the application was that all of the neighbors were, you know, quite distraught, uh, but.
Right, so, so, so you're, you're okay, though, with selling tickets for an elegant indoor lunch for a professional purpose, though, right?
If it's a professional purpose, I'm fine. I mean, they could go barefoot, you know, they don't have to dress up. Uh, but the idea is that this is not something open to the general public on a ticket basis.
Right, so that's gonna be fun putting in that language.
Well, I mean, that's why it says uh indoor and says private.
Right.
Because uh if a company, you know, rents the place. Uh, and then however they wish to run it, it's still private because it's being organized around a, a particular group. That is not open to the public for ticket sales.
On the indoor piece, I'm now kind of thinking about like, um, the Crane Estate, where they have their. They, because of the way the historic building is laid out, they often need to use an outdoor space if they're going to have any kind of. They have that gap.
And this is why we would add um the ability for the ZBA to create rules and regulations. And that way they could allow outdoor operations, you know. Uh, because we all, I mean, the Commons has outdoor weddings, um. You know, has, you know, they're not uh permitted by us, but um they do outdoors. Um, Pierce Farm, Evermore does outdoors. Um, but that it needs to be clear that this is not designed uh for some open field somewhere.
Mm-hmm, I guess I was just wondering if we're creating, making it too strict with the indoor. Like, is there somewhere in between, not the open field, but not like exclusive to this primarily indoor or?
Yeah, maybe something like. This is something that the ZBA is going to have to weigh in on, uh, just, you know, they feel. And then they could write their um regulations, you know, the rules and regulations for the facility.
Okay.
The, um. Uh, permitting board can always. Agree to or not to any sort of a waiver of any rules and regs. So in, in designing this, I, I personally feel it's probably. Better to be more restrictive upfront.
Okay.
Or give that appearance. Yeah, as, as a former arts presenter, you know, I, I've done a number of outdoor events and it is always. A, a major issue. So I think just providing a little, if you will, a little speed bump in the process here. If you wanted to hold an outdoor event, major event, well, you're not supposed to, but. You can ask for a variance. Well, you know, I can't do hot balloon rides in indoors. But we may not, you know, the ZBA, I shouldn't say we, because the Zoning Board of Appeals is the permitting board in this regard. And so they would be meeting on that.
You see, the word event has been interpreted by many very broadly, uh, than an event. Um, you know, is not necessarily a wedding or a birthday or an anniversary or a luncheon or whatever we intended. Or a conference, but an event can be a concert, it can be a movie, it can be a, you know, it can be all kinds of things. So, um, I think we, we really need to, you know, refine this so that we don't have people. Um, you know, just getting a piece of open land and saying, I'm going to put up a ticket booth and I'm going to put up a tent. And I'm going to put up something and I want my conference and event facility permit, you know.
Yeah, I have a couple of hayfields.
Yeah, exactly. Look at my field. I mean, heavens, you know.
You've got a hayfield, let's do that. Um, I, I, I think this is good. How do we, does anyone have any ideas? For wording? Um, do we need wording within this article that expressly states that the ZBA? Creates rules and regs?
Yes, yes, it would be, this would be its own, you know, a, a bylaw. That within the bylaw, there would be, um, I, the, the empowering of the zoning board of appeals. To write rules and regulations. Now, it may be that, um. I, we have to check with town council as to whether this can go in a definition. Or whether we need a separate bylaw altogether, um, that defines the conference and event facility. And authorizes the ZBA to produce rules and regulations.
Okay.
Okay, so moving on. And this is all fodder for you to mull over and to think about wordsmithing and. Um, when we meet with the Board of Appeals, um, uh. We will be discussing, you know, all of this as we go through our annual meeting with them. Okay, um, so the scenic road is just special permit to permit.
I had a question in there, Martha, and I don't know if it has any relevance as I was searching for the scenic road components. Does this affect Article fourteen scenic overlay zone? It refers to a special permit in there, no?
No, we can leave that, I think, um, because it's an overlay zone. Let's see, what, let me see. Well, the overlay zone uh was our effort to create part of Route One as a scenic road. You see, state-numbered highways and state highways cannot be scenic roads, local scenic roads. They're exempt. And so, um, the scenic overlay zone. It was our effort uh to try and get some control over the visuals in that section of Route One.
Totally different, yeah.
Nine.
This one you guys have gone through already, you know, this is about the swimming pool. This is the new language.
I'm sorry, I had to, hang on.
You see, the state lifted its rule about fences around um swimming pools, or they, they did something. They didn't actually lift it, but they added, uh, you know, some extra information. And Ray says, um, you know, Ray says that, you know. People are trying to get away with not building fences, so now we're making it clear what kind of fence they have to build.
Yep.
And that language comes from, um, an earlier state version. That I think actually is continued, but the, the state's uh revision has kind of muddied the waters. You know, about fencing and what constitutes appropriate barriers.
Article. Point four standard. That's that, section nine point oh seven has only seven standards for review.
Okay. Uh, this, yeah, this next one, um. Has come up because of a request, um, that someone has had to add an additional accessory building. Of the property, that's part of the issue. Uh, and we don't say how many accessory buildings you can have. Nor do we say, uh, what size accessory buildings are allowed. And their location of the property. So the question is.
Going to be like a forty by seventy, that there was someone proposing to put in an enormous metal.
Garage.
A garage, yeah, and this would have been his third accessory building on the property.
So.
And so these were the chairman's comments, the ZBA's.
This is a tough one. I mean, the question is how do you determine square footage, um, uh, what happens? I, we may not like a corrugated steel huge structure, you know, on the property. Um, and if it's a big property, then, you know, it would meet the standard of, you know, how much lot coverage? How, what percentage of the lot? Uh, so we may not like that, but what if someone wanted to come along and build a, a horse barn? You know, a large stable. You know, I mean, so, um.
We, we, when, we did discuss this, it is, it was in the minutes and I, I, um, did actually have a comment on the minutes, I forgot about it. Uh, not going to do that now. Uh, if you remember, I made a comment about building garages. A two-car garage has to be a minimum of ten feet wide and about twenty-four feet long for a single car. A comfortable two-car garage, and that would worked out to be a, what, fifteen percent of a sixteen hundred square foot house? So it was, um, and most of the houses in town are larger than sixteen hundred square feet.
Right, so the concept would be to do it as a percentage of the house.
The ten to fifteen percent that I think that, that came from Bob Mori, did, did that come from Bob?
It did.
I think that's really small.
Well, I'm, I'm just concerned about someone who wants to put up a greenhouse, a big greenhouse or a, or. You know, a stable, um, or, you know, any, uh, not that we have any cow barns, and we have cow barns, we don't have cows anymore. But, uh, there are lots of large barns, you know, and structures that are accessory structures. Uh, already, you know, in, in town. So, uh, are we saying that we don't want to see anything more like that?
No, I don't think we can. And there's the, the large cattle barn at the end of Washington Street. Next to Kinsman Lane, that property there, there's a beautiful red gambrel cow barn, milking barn on that property. Um, it's a beautiful building. I don't think they're doing anything with it, but. I wouldn't be against somebody building that.
Well.
Because, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Lynn.
Um, Ray just needed clarification because it, a building that was to him very large. And a third accessory building and made out of steel, he was trying to interpret these to say, what was the intent of this? Can something like that be built? And if the answer is yes, then you don't need to do anything here. If you're saying, you, you don't want to control it. He just wanted clarity. I think he's gotten more clarity now because Bob Moriarty came back and said, if you read. The wording exactly, um, you can have more than one accessory building. So that's the way it is in there now, and there's no size limit. That's the way it is now. So if you don't want to change that, and it's been clarified for Ray at this point.
Okay, it just has to conform with our, our setback requirements in, in our dimension tables.
Well, as I said, the, uh, the height restriction, uh, the twenty-foot height restriction for accessory buildings. Um, uh, that works very well for things like garages and the like. But if someone wants to put up a forty by seventy corrugated steel building that's, you know, only twenty feet tall. I mean, you know, it would still work. I mean, that, you know, the height restriction would still, um, wouldn't do anything. You know, to prevent such a building. And there was such a corrugated steel building built down behind Pemberton. Uh, and it was not well-received, you know, shall we say, by the neighborhood.
But how do, how do you put a limitation on, on aesthetics? I, I, I concur. I, I would not want to be living next to the storage unit down on the Danvers Line there. That is this big. That is this big honkin' rectangular square metal building. Um, I don't want to live next to that. So, but how do we?
Well, zoning cannot affect uh, materials construction reels. You can't zone against corrugated steel buildings. Yeah, I mean, that.
Right.
Quick question, you mentioned that there's not a, you can have more than one. So when it come, when we're, when it talks about occupying that percentage of the rear yard, is it per AD, per unit, per um, structure or cumulatively?
That's an excellent question, silly, because I don't think anyone ever thought of more than one accessory building. You see, I think that all of this was written with the thought that there would be just one. And so if you have three, that's a brilliant question, you know.
Okay, can we limit it to one and then have a uh, a variance if they need, if they want to apply for a second?
Well, I, I would like to talk about this with the zoning board to see, um, because they're, the, what Bob means out is in uh, the preamble to the definitions, um, what various elements mean. And uh, he now interprets it as meaning that more than one actually would be allowed under our bylaw, the way it is phrased. So the question is, do we rephrase something to make it clear that only one is allowed? And, and then, of course, as you point out, if someone wants to add one, they need to get a variance or something. Okay, the next one, um, uh, the next one is, oh, the first of three. Uh, we've now learned that by December of twenty twenty-six, we have to have revised solar, wind, and wind bylaws and these battery storage bylaw. Now, of course, the state is not going to have its guidelines or regulations out until March of this year. So obviously, we cannot produce a solar bylaw or a wind bylaw in time for this year's town meeting. Because we won't have any idea of what the regulations are. But we could deal with this battery storage business, uh, because the, we have the um, the West Newbury bylaw that was approved by the Attorney General and meets the standard of what the state is looking for. So if we are so inclined, um, we can take a look at the West Newbury bylaw, uh, see if it uh, passes muster with the fire department, because that's the major issue about these battery storage units, um, and then see what else uh, we might want to do. Uh, the problem is that without regulations, uh, we would not know whether any changes we were making would be acceptable. Right, so uh, it's something, it, it at least would give us a little leg up uh, because the, the new solar and wind bylaws are, are basically, it's another one, it was from the Clean Energy Act that requires every community of the Commonwealth to come up with these things. And they're, they're to be comprehensive permits and to expedite the permitting of solar and wind uh, facilities. And so the bylaw would require um, that somehow or another this be approached such as the uh, forty Bs are, that is a comprehensive permit by the zoning board, presumably, or the planning board, um, where it's all handled in one place with people feeding their information in, so that the applicant doesn't have to go through CONSCOM and Board of Health and this one and that one and the next one, but rather it's a single permit. But we have no idea of what the regulations are going to be. And we will not be able to meet the December twenty twenty-six deadline because we're not gonna have a fall town meeting. Um, and, you know, so we'll just be out of compliance, you know, until the next year. I guess.
Yep. We should just, you know, send a letter to the Commonwealth, letting them know that.
They don't seem to care, honestly.
For those kinds of things, do they generally provide a template like they did for the ADUs?
Uh, we didn't have a template for the ADU.
Oh, they didn't have like a recommended? Maybe I misunderstood.
That was something that uh, we devised using the Cape Cod Commission ADU.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
But we did have the model bylaw for the MBTA district.
Okay.
And that one, we could just, you know, we have the template and we could pick and choose from.
So it's not something that the state does generally for anything that they're kind of mandating?
Oh, well, they do, but usually it's so late, you know, it takes a long time for them to come up with it. And they have said that, oh, yes, they're going to come up with some model by, at least that's what I understood, that they were gonna come up with some model bylaws, along with all their rules and regulations. Uh, and if it's done uh, the way the MBTA district was done, you know, it was a long document, the model bylaw, with all the rules, regulations, and everything um, considered as part of the template explaining why you could do this or you couldn't do that, you know, in the, in the bylaw. But that took a long time, and uh, so we don't know whether this, when something is gonna show up. It should eventually, you know. So anyway, um, they, they are fairly technical, you know, these energy bylaws, you know, with all kinds of technical concerns. Uh, but you might want to take a look at that and uh, see what you think. The biggest issues is, I understand it, with the battery storage uh, has to do with safety, public safety, you know, fire, Board of Health, you know, these are massive lithium batteries that are used. And they're, you know, kind of scary.
Jen would probably have something to offer us.
We did reach out to the chief, and she said this is kind of complicated, and that she would lean on Ray um, for this one.
Okay.
Well, I know some of the uh, the input, the, the Department of uh, Energy Resources was reaching out to fire departments to fire people who are expert in the fire industry, I think, in order to get their feedback uh, during the public comment period, you know, for these, you know, for, when they start talking about getting these things ready. So anyway, uh, it's something for us to take a look at. Okay, this next section is what I referred to earlier, you know, potentially combining these restaurant types.
Restaurant and the snack and non-alcoholic beverage.
But the retail specialty foods uh, was something different because that uh, includes seating. You know, the retail specialty food could have seating and it, you know, was not just traffic coming in and out of the building like a retail operation. You know, or like a, a regular restaurant. And then finally, um, we have the the zoning appendix. Now, I'm not so sure that this has to go to town meeting. Uh, if you read what it says in the appendix, it says that these were the standards jointly voted by the zoning and planning boards. I think this was not a warrant article, you know, it was not something that was approved by town meeting, but it's simply a set of standards that the two boards would use. So I don't think this would need to go to town meeting.
No, but it, it should be approved by two boards. And, and I agree, we could actually, in terms of adding a lighting component to the nuisance, nuisance section, um, one dash three point seven, we could just use, um, there's a standard section for that proposed uh, dark skies bylaw that we worked on that would slot in quite nicely here.
Well, this is something that um, the ZBA needs to agree, you know, that they need to, that they want to change it.
I'm just saying, if, if, if you wanted to do that, there's a, there's a ready solution.
Good, maybe you can take that up again and send it out.
Yeah, I can send it, um, I can send it tonight to, um.
Just send it to us, okay?
Do you want me to send it to everyone, or Lynn, do you want me to send it to you, and then?
Yeah, I think it's safer so that you guys aren't communicating.
Exactly, so I'll, I'll send it, I'll send it to Lynn. Um, it, uh, just uh, as an FYI, as I was going through the um, standards for review, which is referenced here, or it's referenced somewhere in there. Where was it?
What standards, Steve?
Oh, yeah, okay, so this is as written, and, and the bottom here, it says outdoor lighting shop in general conform with that specified in section ZA one dash three point four.
No, that's, that's a wrong number.
It, exactly, it's not the right number, okay.
You know, I think I lifted that. Is that what's in the actual? I think I just.
No, one.
It is the wrong number in the original.
Ah, okay.
Yeah. So, yeah, one point three point four is parking, or one dash three point four deals with parking. But also, while, while we're there, I'm sorry, this is, this is sort of only tangential. There's a misnumbering in the standards for review, uh, Article nine point zero seven for site plan review. There are, there are indeed nine standards, but it lists one through eight and then a repeat of the number seven, even though it's a different standard. And again, I don't think that's something that we have to deal at, at town meeting with. It, it's a typo. But it's just something I came across. Cause I was looking at, at ZA one dash three point four, blah, blah, and that, you know, of course, leads to something else, leads to something else.
Now, I don't know what that um, section is supposed to be.
What, uh, one dash three point four? I couldn't find it, or, or not, that is parking. There's nothing, it, there's nothing about lighting in the sta, in the appendix.
No, you're quite right. Um, when we were looking at this uh, last year, I noted that as well, I don't know what section they're referring to. Um, it certainly isn't the parking section, maybe there was something else. And I don't know that we want to go down this rabbit hole, but there were um, various eras in which sections of the zoning bylaw fell out. They just kind of vanished. Uh, then it had to do with um, opening and closing the documents, you know, frequently and hitting delete instead of, you know, space and various things like that.
One thing I, I do find that I, I think needs to be corrected is in um, the, the definition of the accessory buildings somewhere, it says, according to the standards of, of bylaw, and I think they got it backwards, they put six, and it should be four. Four is the density and dimension, six is floodplain. So I have to find that, I think it's, that just needs to be corrected, and actually, that would have to go to town meeting. I'll, I'll find it and I'll, I'll share it with everybody so they can look at it.
Okay, well, this is a good kind of first go-through of what we might very well be dealing with. Um, and it's, it would be really great if everyone could take a look, read over, um, come up with suggestions or at least questions, um, because when we do, I think it's in January that meeting, we're meeting with the ZBA. Is that our joint meeting?
Yeah, the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, January twenty-seventh will be our annual meeting with the ZBA to go over all of this stuff, to get their input. Um, and, you know, sometimes they say, no, we don't want to do anything, or we don't need to do anything, or they have a good reason, and sometimes they say, yeah, we like it, but we'd like to do it this way. So it's our opportunity to uh, work with the board that frankly uses these bylaws uh, very regularly.
Yes.
Here, I, I just found, it was here, six point oh two, accessory buildings or other structures subject to provisions of Article six.
Yeah, you're right, that's supposed to be our, that's supposed to be Article four.
Yep.
Yeah, just uh, someone typed the one be, after the V instead of before the V.
Yeah.
Yep. That's exactly what happened.
Exactly what happened.
Okay, um, any questions?
Uh, Lynn, can I, I'm gonna send that tomorrow if that's okay with you. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion?
It's just one update, uh, Martha, did you want to tell them about the grant application?
Oh, yes, we're applying to MAPC for a technical assistance grant um, to help us with our historic redevelopment bylaw. Now, we don't know that we're gonna get it, uh, but we have, you know, written up our hope, you know. So, uh.
It was sent off yesterday.
We'll see what happens. Um, yeah, it's gone off, and if we get it, then it will be, uh, it will involve us and um, the Historic Commission and the Open Space Committee and CONSCOM, that is, the, the whole range of uh, people who get involved in dealing with historic properties and their development. And the hope is that whatever, um, i- if this were to, you know, come to be, uh, that we would, uh, we've already told them, we have a draft, and we have all of these, all the data that they need, and that, you know, we're, we basically want them to make this legal, you know, to review it and come up with ideas uh, as to how to improve it, or what would work, what wouldn't work, um, and create a document that could go to town meeting, not this year, but next year. And that's the idea of, you know, historic properties that could be used as, um, you know, multifamily housing, or again, conference and event facilities, uh, you know, health, you know, uh, you know, whether we're nursing homes, you know, healthcare facilities, whatever it might be. So we all remember that, right? Yeah. Okay, uh, so we'll, we'll keep you apprised. Lynn, when would we hear about this?
I'm, I'm thinking at least a month. Um, the deadline was December eighth. So hopefully, we made it in as one of the first applications, so, um, but they'll wait to receive all the others before they decide through the first batch, so.
So, so it would be nice, it'd be very helpful. Um, anyway, anything else that we need to talk about tonight? No? Are we all good? Thank you. This has been a long meeting, longer than usual, uh, but uh, we did have to do it. Hopefully, no one will have to deal with these rules and regulations and forms for another decade. Which is about when they usually happen, but.
Yeah, I'll be dead by then, so I don't have to worry about it.
Okay, um, very good. I think we've had quite the meeting, um, and I don't know about you, but I'm gonna go have something for my supper.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
Very good. Roll call, Jenny?
Hi.
Yeah, hi, silly.
Hi.
Greg.
Hi.
Steve.
Hi.
And I vote aye.